Welcome to the Village of Waverly, January 4th. Letting work. As I read this right from the beginning.
I am currently in the state of the United States of America. To the result, we would say that our nation, under our legal principle, will be just so wrong.
Please be seated. As the board has changed for review minutes from December 21st.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I welcome your motion to accept the minute as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First item on tonight's agenda, Archit design Mr. Pearl LLC ARB review draft resolution for ARB and Ridge preservation for a proposed single-family dwelling. Said property is located in 1527 Road in Highland Mills, Arizona, as the Village of Waverly Tax Act, Section 215, Block 1, Block 5. This applicant has received a waiver from the Board of Trustees of the Village Ward, and it received the order. After settlement of facts and findings, this ward did date the termination that the resident shall not be visible from designated Ridge Preservation View Corridor or will land in the Hilton. In connection with this finding, the planning board has determined in accordance with Village Code 310-13 D7B, that the requirements of those Code 310-13 Ridge Preservation for the applicant to submit a photo simulation issued by the league, as the structure affected will not be visible from the designated view corridor. And in his capacity to architecture review board, the planning board has determined upon reviewing these elements, that considering the location of the property, that the structure as opposed is not access to the similar or dissimilar from any other structure in the neighborhood, nor is the proposed design inappropriate. We get into the specific conditions. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the architectural review board as part of its approval, nor shall any specific occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in form of such renderings, any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. Only windows shall be constructed or coated or coated with nonreflective material and anti-reflection window film will be applied to any low-eating windows installed. If the existing dwelling needs demolishing or service by an oil tank, oil tank, sheltering is upon prior notice of the Village Department, sheltering only according to the state and local requirements, but removal of abandoned oil tanks. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain approval from the ARB County Department of Public Works for the driveway proposed. If the county approval differs materially from the approved driveway, in the opinion of the code enforcement officer in consultation with the village engineer, then the building permit may not be issued unless and until the applicant returns the planning board for consideration of the revised driveway. Prior to deciding the renderings, the applicant shall apply a memorandum with the village planner dated September 27, 2021, to the satisfaction of the village planner. Prior to deciding the regulations, the applicant shall revise the ARB application and/or floor plans to consistently reflect proposed gross floor area of the home. I'll offer motion to accept the draft resolution of the Village Ward. Second, any question?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, East Dean Management, 15273 Road in Highland Mills, and as known as Village of Waverly Tax Act, Section 213, Block 1, Block 13, Lot 12. Again, this one has received a waiver from the Village Board for, from the Village Board's warning. So after settlement of facts and findings, we get into the specific conditions. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the architectural review board as part of its approval, nor shall any specific occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in form of such renderings, any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. Only windows shall be constructed of or coated with nonreflective material and anti-reflection window film will be applied to new low-eating windows installed. Prior to signing of the renderings, the applicant shall apply a memorandum with the village engineer dated September 16, 2022, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Prior to issuing to the building permit, the design drawings publicly retained will show them prepared by a New York State licensed professional engineer provided to the building department. Prior to issuing to the building permit, the applicant shall obtain approval from the ARB County Department of Public Works for the driveway proposed. If the county's approvals differ materially from the approved driveway, in the opinion of the code enforcement officer in consultation with the village engineer, then the building permit may not be issued unless until the applicant returns the planning board for consideration of the revised driveway. Prior to deciding the renderings, the applicant shall provide any disclosure form of authorization to respect proper form that had been properly filled out next to you. Prior to deciding the renderings, the applicant shall provide revised ARB form, retained all fence materials and gross floor area of the home. I will offer motion to accept draft resolution of approval as well.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have more additional items on the agenda today? I will slow on this one, this is for the Waverly Villas Clubhouse. This is the draft resolution approval that we have acted on, no counter. We were waiting on this, it comes from the applicant. So after settlement of facts and findings, this application is presented from the Board of Trustees established by Level 4 Number 5 of 2022, taking into the Board of Trustees uncertain permits, certificates of occupancy approvals, as a completed sequence by receipt of final statement from the planning board, and has such determination in effect prior to effective date set global law, allowing certain forms of ownership. This is what we get at this specific condition. All obligations of the applicant under its 2006 final supplement, site plan, and special permit approval, as amended for time and time, and the associated developers agreements, and all conditions of such approvals and agreements, including the not limited to all blocking obligations, shall be in full force effect and are incorporated into this resolution as does specifically set forth in that line here, except as specifically modified as a result of this approval and/or by the revised plans submitted in connection here with it. Number two, no building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the architectural review board as part of its approval, nor shall any specific occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in form of such renderings, any deviations from such renderings will require further planning board review. Only windows shall be constructed of or coated with nonreflective materials or anti-reflection window film will be applied to any low-eating windows installed. Prior to signing of the plans, the applicant shall apply a memorandum with the village engineer dated.
October 13th, and revise the plans as needed to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Oh, and on number five, it says December 21st, it should be December 1st. Sorry, I jumped ahead.
Prior to any destruction and installation of utility retaining walls onsite, the applicant shall apply a report of Kevin Elkhart, dated December 1, 2021, and either one, remove the fill approximately 30 feet and sloping towards the south, that has been positive on the site over the years, and rebuild the pavement to 12 lifts or two. Drill soil boring from excess of fill and decide that soils are suitable for a in-place densification using deep dynamic compaction DDC. The work shall be supervised by a New York State licensed geotechnical engineer and a certified report that the soils are suitable for construction of the plans approved, here we shall be filed with the building department prior to the destruction of the building retaining walls and insulation of the materials. The applicant shall apply with the recommendations and notes indicated on the engineered plan prepared by Robert Race PE last revised October 31, 2022. And a New York State licensed geotechnical engineer shall be present onsite at the applicant's expense to provide recommendations and reports, which shall be submitted to the village department for construction as required by the engineered plan's reference here. The applicant shall revise the plans to show no parking signs located along. The applicant's property batteries along Central Valley Line, and a note that, and a note that additional no parking signs shall be installed further along the roadways adjacent to the applicant's property if authorized by the applicable homeowners association. The applicant's requires a digital request that homeowners association authorized on additional no parking signs. Copies to all correspondence between the applicant and homeowners association in this regard shall be provided to the building department prior to the operation as the clubhouse slash recreational facility. All no parking signs dated here and all allowed by the homeowners association shall be installed in satisfaction of the village, village building inspector. Home ownership maintenance of the pump station, forced link, and ground sewer connections to the pump station shall be responsible to the homeowners association. General lighting of the clubhouse recreational facility shall be reduced to security levels after operating hours. Side lighting shall be designed with non-glare fixtures, which provide eternal shieldiness to eliminate all side glare. The fixtures shall be IPA, LED, or green glow screen tiers, night-time friendly or dark sky lighting. Any wall pack fixtures shall include non-glare sheets. The planning board has considered the modest lifestyle along the western property line in the west hill of State Park Road, and has determined to create no significant impact on the fiber of the community. All planning shown on the plan is required or authorized for this resolution approval. Shall be planned within the time of matter, consistent with planning procedures that maintain the healthy and fibered condition of perpetuity. The applicant shall keep and maintain all areas surrounding the dumpster, refrigeration facilities, and heating and conditioning. For the code requirements, 310-314.E, 5A, of the water quality control issue, the planning board approves the transportation of contaminated stones in village batteries on the snow-sourced area on applicant's plans insufficient. The applicant will provide a snow disposition plan identifying the alternative snow disposal location, and according to the prior documentation issued by New York State EDC, to the satisfaction of the village engineer.
That's you. Did you want to talk further about it? Oh, that was in bold italics, just in case the village planning board had any questions, and to make sure that you agreed with that statement, because I, we only talked about it, I think, once, and just didn't want it to slip through the cracks.
I agree.
Okay. Yes, so if you want to take a break, I'll just add the other two. Okay. So then there's a new, number 14, prior to the signing of the plans, proposed water and sewer facilities and connections shall be revised to the satisfaction of the village water and sewer superintendent and village engineer. And number 15, the clubhouse shall not be used for religious purposes.
I will, they may have any questions, I know that was the one before I. So all rise motion to approve draft resolution with amendments and consularities. Second, any question?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to our regular scheduled problem. I feel the sign is 65 Pascal High Round ARB review documents submitted for proposed ARB Ridge Preservation for modification to the single-family dwelling to include a two-story rear addition and partial conversion of the garage to mudroom and seasonal kitchen. Said property is located in 65 Pascal High Round, Central Valley, and as the Village of Waverly Tax Act, Section 255, Block 3, Block 41. Yeah, anybody from Saturday? I feel the signs. How are you, sir?
Hi.
I'll just re-run down the problems.
The project is an addition.
I don't need my phone. Uh, who?
The proj, the project is a two-story addition to the existing of a single-family house. First floor will have a dining room, and the second floor is an addition to the master bedroom, the existing master bedroom.
Do you have a question to add before that?
Can the applicant's representative just introduce herself for the record, please?
Show me, respect.
Sorry.
So, since the applicant's last appearance, which was in October, we received additional materials to support their application, including a survey, plot plan, and photos of neighboring homes that you requested. We did have a chance to review the revised plot plan, and note that, based on that and the survey, the plan complies with the bulk requirements of the zone, which addresses our prior comments on that issue. The applicant also provided an email regarding the increase in gross floor area, so that total will be 3,284 square feet. So we've asked for that information, that was in the email, to be included on the architectural plans for the record. With respect to the photographs that was provided, that were provided by the applicant, there were two sets that were submitted. The first set consisted of four black and white photos of homes that were within 300 feet of the applicant's lot, and I think that was a specific request at the last meeting, as far as the distance from the proposed action. The second set contained three photos of homes that range in size, or, I'm sorry, three photos of homes ranging approximately 270 to 900 feet from the applicant's lot, and those photos contained, in the title of the pictures, the size of the other homes, the comparable homes. So our, our review of that found that the proposed home is within the range of the other sizes of homes that were provided. The applicant should confirm whether it's their intent to match the color and material of the existing siding and roofing, or if all the new treatments are proposed, or if all new treatments are proposed. And also, at the last meeting, you requested a photo of the existing home to compare, you know, what was actually being changed, so that should be submitted. We know that the ARB form requires revisions to area and decking materials to be included. With respect to Ridge Preservation, the applicant provided photos of the Dunderberg entrance to WP3, but we note that the Ridge Preservation View Corridors are actually Route 32 and 105. This application is technically sandwiched between the two, so the applicant should provide additional materials to support, you know, whether or not this action would be visible from the view corridor itself. Non-reflective windows are a requirement of your code under Ridge Preservation, so that should be noted on the applicant's plan. And our only other comment is that, once you have confirmation that the applicant, or confirmation on the existing condition and the colors of the home, as well as the limits of the proposed modifications, you should consider whether the plan meets the requirements to use materials and colors that blend the home into the surrounding environment, or if a waiver would be appropriate. And that's all I have.
Questions to have with your votes?
You had also said something about trees.
I think that, if I'm correct, on the right application, the existing lot is cleared behind, oh, okay, I did, you're right, I asked for the applicant to confirm if any trees are going to be removed.
There's no trees on the property.
No trees are on the property, yeah. I did see that on Google Earth, but it's good to have for the record, so I appreciate you calling out my attention.
And the windows. Does this match existing siding, the roof colors, or are we changing them?
Yes, we are leaving the existing. Since it's white, with the previous meeting, you're, you're allowed us to use the white for the addition to match the, to the old one, to the existing. And the window note is actually on the plan, on page A1.
A1. Sometimes, just, what we typically ask is for a detailed response to our comment letters, and then that way, we can kind of check off all the boxes, and, you know, not repeat ourselves.
I think the big thing we need for this one floor is going to be the actual photos from view corridor, so it's not, you took the entrance, you got the 32, looking up towards the site. If you need a map, the Village Department can give you a map of where all the view corridors are, and you would need to take the pictures from the closest view corridor, looking at, at your site, showing, you know, usually what we do is I'll take a picture, and they'll, let's say, take an arrow, draw like a little arrow, like this is where the house is, to support you with an idea of when you're looking at the view corridor, where the house is up in that set. And then the response to Natalie's letter is, well, when we need it. Anything else? If you get back to Gmail, the recommendation on 11-3. We want to, this is board going away till they get the new Ridge Recorder photos back for the determination of a public hearing.
Prefer.
Okay, not much of that. And then, sir, also with, with this one, you know, you gave us pictures of the surrounding houses, what people will normally do in houses, board decide if it's in their neighborhood or not, is they'll list under each one of the, like, comparison homes, the total square footage, and then like the first floor, second floor, or in the basement, and this way this board gets an idea of just how it compares to everything else in the neighborhood. Does that make sense? Okay. So just a little bit onward, you're almost, you're almost there, just a little bit onward, and then we can get you over, over there, there's your number. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Newman ARB reviews revised documents submitted for proposed ARB modifications to the single-family dwelling to include removal and closure of garage doors and windows with entry doors, said property is 1972 in Highland Mills, known as the Village of Waverly Tax Act, Section 219, Block 10, Block 5. What do you think, sir, how are you?
Hi.
Just refreshing my memory, what's going on?
I just want to close my two garage doors. And that's it.
Alan?
Sure. So, similar to the last application, this applicant was last before you in October, we received materials and responses to our prior comments that addressed a lot of them. The applicant advised it is their intent to match the existing materials and colors of the home. They've indicated that there are no changes to the internal space, except for closing the garage doors, and that that space is going to be used as storage. We noted that the nature of the application may not necessitate the photos of neighboring homes to compare under your similarity and dissimilarity criteria, since the footprint, the floor area, the colors, and the materials are not changing. Nonetheless, the board should consider that and advise the applicant in that regard. With respect to Ridge Preservation, the applicant advises the home is not visible from the view corridor, and we tend to agree that the changes to this existing structure are so minimal, that visibility of the structure would seem to be unchanged as part of the project, but the planning board should also make that finding, or other, to your discretion. And then, the only other comment that we had that may require additional discussion is with respect to the projected water and sewer demand form. So again, the applicant indicated that they're planning on using the space as storage, but you typically see floor plans that demonstrate an existing versus proposed condition to confirm that. In this case, the applicant, right now, the projected water and sewer demand form just simply indicates no additional water usage, so our recommendations to kind of wrap that up would be, you know, for the applicant to update the form and indicate that there are no new bedrooms proposed. And also, you can consider with counsel whether or not it would be appropriate to include a condition of your action that would prohibit new bedrooms as part of your approval. And Ruth, the only other thing is, I think a public hearing remains to be scheduled or waived by the board.
Questions?
Are we going to request a, it says storage space already?
Well, I was, I mean, I was going to ask Kelly if it's okay if we just make it a condition in the, the resolution, that is going to be, it's not going to be. I thought she said you go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. That can be a condition. Also, just one thing, do you still have to declare this to be a type 2 action under seeker?
Yeah. We will get it. All right, does anybody have any questions to the applicant or for Alan?
No.
Okay, so, and this board is comfortable if we approve this application, making that a condition of approval that it's on storage space?
Yes.
Based on the type of renovation that's taking place in the minimally, I just made a point there, I'm going to suggest that we waive the public hearing.
Support that.
Okay, I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing.
Second.
Any question?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, same thing on Ridge Preservation, I agree, I told past society about the viewable from the 105 or New York State Route 32, which is the nearest Ridge Preservation Corridor, so I'm going to make a motion that Ridge Preservation is waived for this application.
Second.
Second, any questions?
No.
No.
Aye.
All right, I'm also going to make a motion, I would type, this is type 2 action, you see, right?
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I will also request, make a motion to have counsel draft a resolution, a draft resolution of approval.
Second.
With the modifications moved.
With the modifications, all right.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Eric, though?
I think you, you've got everything, right there.
Okay. All right, so when we, as soon as we get the resolution from our attorney, we'll be on the next agenda, so we can review the record and make the action.
Okay, so, I will be invited again, or?
Yeah, then we invite you again, and then that's when you can.
That's just an approval?
Yep.
Okay, so.
You're good.
Anything coming up?
Just the one form that Natalie, did you get comment management report?
Yes, I have.
So it's just the update to the water and sewer demand form, right, that just don't be used for storage checks?
Oh, it's just saying that it's closed garage door, no problem?
Yeah, just the storage.
Okay.
That's all we need to do, so. All right, thank you.
Sir, what was your name again? Just.
Okay, next item on the agenda. I'm cooking with, cooking with propane. Light bright signs, we begin to discuss the review documents submitted for ARB review to some proposed beginning and end located in Waverly Center, said property is located in Central Drive and Central Valley, and is known as the Village of Waverly Tax Act, Section 225, Block 2, Block 1, and Block 3. By process illumination.
Hello?
I'm just saying, sorry, I think Kelly was stating.
Oh, yeah, Maria Rotundo, with light bright signs.
All right, so just give us the, you want to look.
Yes. Okay, so Hampton Inn would like an additional sign on their east elevation, which you could see from the highway?
Six.
Oh, it's six.
Is that where you really can see from it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. And it would be channel letters that read Hampton Inn, and then they are also proposing non-illuminated welcome letters for the Port Cocheur. I don't know if I said that right, but.
Is this on E and F clearly?
Yeah, so, the, well, E is the existing clearance. That's on there. Yeah, ENF, actually, because there's clearance on each side.
Those are both there.
Yes. So the only proposed are the Hampton Inn letters and the welcome letters. And the, the welcome ones are basically six square feet, non-illuminated. And the Hampton Inn letters are three-foot LED letters. I mean, the, the H is three-foot, the other letters are smaller, but I have the overall, do you need the overall size?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, is it for a time clear, LED or is that incandescent?
Yeah, there's two, front and the opposite side.
Oh, they live by LED or they live by incandescent?
They're either neon or LED.
Yeah, incandescent, I think, is like a Christmas tree. I don't think we use that for signs.
Yeah, they're either neon or LED, I'm not sure exactly, but I'm pretty sure it's LED. Yeah, they're all.
The welcome signs are, are they lit or not lit?
Non illuminated, yeah. They're, they're just non illuminated, I don't know. Comacell is the material.
What, what sign is that, location B? That, that's a Hampton Inn existing?
Yeah, yep, that's existing, that's on the west elevation, which, which is basically the opposite side of where we're, it's a side elevation.
Okay, yeah.
Just to weigh in, I think also part of your proposal is to change the facing and lighting of the two existing Hampton Inn signs. So when you asked before about whether they would match, I think, you know, I think that's part of your, it says replacement of red acrylic faces and new red LED components for the two existing wall signs. Right, exactly, so just to bring that to the board's attention.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
That's true.
Any other questions for the board?
Really brief, because I think, you know, the proposal is kind of what it is, although the code only permits one wall sign per use, so the increase of this application by an additional two signs would appear to require a variance. And then also, as part of that, the applicant should provide the sign area for each sign proposed in relation to the total wall area. The code permits ten percent of the wall area, so that is really all we had. I think that, you know, at this time, this kind of requires a referral to the Z B A, you know, unless the board takes exception to the colors and, and the applicant's proposal and wants to offer any guidance in that regard.
And it's not a big change from what's there.
So not much this board can be feeding tonight, you have to go see with the Z B A, because they have to see, they have to get various done, because you are over the number of signs that are applied by code. So what this board is going to do is we're going to, I'm going to make a motion to prefer this application to the Z B A.
Second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you'll get, I know this is off, you're off on camera, but you're on, you can check the.
Okay.
So you'll go see them, you'll present your case for them, I'll let you know, you know, ask you some questions, and let you know if you get a variant or not, and if they ran the variant, you'll come, you'll be coming back to us.
Okay, I do have a question. They will be sending me another, more paperwork to fill out, or am I using the existing paperwork?
Most of the paperwork can be reused, I think there is an application to be approved in the Z B A that has to be filled out.
Okay.
So there is, there is a different form, you go in front of that, but you can use the same, like, the materials should be as far as the colors, the signage, and stuff like that.
Okay.
Like Alan suggested, and the total square footage of the study to the, to your application, so you know how many square feet the study.
Yeah, just the way I outlined it for this board. Do I have to wait for the application to come to me, or can I download it on?
The resolution, if you want.
Oh, I could download it, okay.
Fill it out and submit it to them, and I leave those things there with the referral, show, put up a memo to the building department, so once they get that memo and your application, Maria will reach out to you, let you know what your, your agenda, their agenda, and then go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, they're once a month or twice a month.
I'm sorry?
They're once a month.
They're once a month.
Oh, okay.
So it would likely be the February eighth Z B A meeting if you get everything in, you know, soon?
Okay.
They meet the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, the same place.
Okay, great.
It's a different cast of characters.
All right, and when do you think the referral will be?
I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Oh, great, okay.
Wow.
Well, I, otherwise I forget and I get lost in my notes and.
And so then I go to their meeting, and then if they approve me, then I come back here. If they don't approve me, it's done. It's over, okay.
There are a lot of actions you can do, you know, thank you. They can explain, they can explain all that to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Have a good day.
And, and Woodbury Topland has requested to adjourn to another meeting, if anyone is not being, you can spend. I think that is almost a record for a planning board.
For like five items, yeah.
Yeah, all right, I'll offer a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, any questions, if there's any else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.